Seven o'clock, I'm going to call the town about potato plant and we're meeting the board. We're going to get into the regular things afterwards. The first thing we have is a presentation by Sharon McWesley. She's been here before and she's talked to us about radiation overload and I'm going to let her talk about it. She's got additional information and we have to decide what we're going to do if we can help her or can't help her. So make your...
Okay, I have to be out in 10 minutes because of the overload. And so I did this, I practiced, it's nine minutes. So if you still need further discussion, then I can come back next month.
Okay.
And so thank you, thank you again for your time. I appreciate it. So what I'm going to do today is I've had, I've been dealing with this disability, electromagnetic hypersensitivity syndrome, about four or five years. And so through that time, I've met numerous people. I don't even sometimes know how they find me. But a doctor once called me and said, "I have a patient and she doesn't know where to live." And she's asking me, it's like, "I don't know." So that's just an example. So what I wanted to do is I've just got like examples of people that have crossed my path in the last three or four, five years. So about a month ago or so, I wrote to an acquaintance in Buffalo. They moved to a suburb to get away from the radiation in the city. And so I asked her in this letter, "What kind of symptoms do you have? And how do you treat them?" So this is her response. Yes, we both have digestive... Her husband, who was an IT person, has the same, similar person, similar disorder as she does. Like similar to mine, but they vary. Symptoms vary. So she responded to me, and I got this the other day. "Yes, we both have digestive problems. I take divisilis or something like that for it. Looking for a very simple enzyme to take. Used to take one years ago, but became allergic to it." She has multiple sensitivities. Your immune system starts going after a while. So she said, "Doctors give so many tests for guts and were too sensitive to go to different doctors." Then she went on to tell me about this caliphosphate cell salt GX. And it comes from a health store close by to her. And she said it deals with, it helps. It helps a little with symptoms from nervous system symptoms. The best way to... Of course, she said, "Leaving the house is the best way to escape." 5G came down her road. And even though she went out and tried to stop them, they couldn't skip that little tower. So she said, "Of course, leaving the house is the best way to escape. And maybe you could look for that caliphosphate cell salt." "We take it during the day and before night. And it's all natural, homeopathic bio-salt." New paragraph. Larry, her husband, Larry's friend in Arizona and a former professor is very electronically sensitive. And no one can even bring in a cellphone into his house. He has no TV, ever. No computer like us. No CD player. Never was, never uses even a landline phone. A couple of his friends in Arizona are the same way. At least he uses central air in the summer. I can stick on central air, but need it in the hot summer day, on the hot summer days. Our friend John in Syracuse is totally off the grid. But still, but still we can phone. But no electricity for lights, cooking. And he washes his laundry by hand and uses propane instead. Yesterday, we watched, excuse me, watched TV with... Yesterday, we watched TV for over an hour. Yesterday, we watched over an hour of TV. It was too much and we both got sick. Normally, it's only one and a half to two hours a week. And even then, we get sick. But people needs visual stimuli. Well, that's it for now, Sharon. P.S., her name is there, which I waited out. "It's getting harder for my husband to make copies since his legs are causing problems for him from diabetes." He was in the military. Another acquaintance of mine, this was years ago. I met her before, about four or five years ago, and I hadn't seen her until recently. And she had a, I think it's called a parotid gland, near, up somewhere. It's a salivary gland, I know that. And when they diagnosed her, they said it was from using her cellphone. And she was so anxious, she went to California to have that operation, have it removed. My brother-in-law's father, he died in his early 50s due to excessive radiation in the military. An old high school friend of mine, his daughter, she's in her early 50s right now. And she's dying with Lou Gehrig's disease. She's in a wheelchair. And the government is paying her $6,000 a month because they took responsibility because she was over-radiated while in the military. I have had a friend and a neighbor who, they know I have a little sensitivity. And they said that, they came to me and said, "One plays games on her phone and she says, 'Sharon, I'm starting to feel tingling in my hands.'" And I don't know, she's really addicted to that, so I kind of bought out. My neighbor came to me and said, "Sharon," he said, "I'm giving out my Wi-Fi because I'm starting to feel the radiation in my hands." He did do that. Now, with my experience for this EHS is that I want to just bring your attention to the pandemic that we all experienced several years ago. I still live the same way. I can only grow, go in a grocery store for 15 minutes at the most. And once I'm in there, I start getting symptoms. Depending on how many people are around me and if they, obviously, they're on their phones or they're looking up, you know, they have their list and all that. So, I mean, so that's kind of where I am. And I just wanted to share with you that this here... Oh, your staff helper here. I know I overloaded all you guys and people at the town board. I've been sending out emails all through the pandemic probably and, you know, they are. And they're huge. Now, I read them because doctors have a tough time. There's no treatment for what I have. So anyway, I just happened to run across this the other day. And if you want to hopefully...
Kim.
Kim. If you would like this, you could ask Kim to send it to you. If you don't, I don't want to be, you know, a pain in the butt.
So why don't we send it to everyone and they can decide what they want to do with it?
Okay, it's up to you. There's two asterisks, okay? The first one just tells a little bit about what causes this. And the second one here is you're probably familiar with T cells. If you've known anybody in your family with cancer, your T cells are part of your immune system. It'll tell you if you just look at the two asterisks if you want. And also down here, it talks about, I underlined this, but I didn't asterisk. It says, "It's linked to a number of neurological, neuromuscular disorders, including Alzheimer's." So if you're interested, you may think, "It's not happening to me." But when the tumor was discovered on my adrenal gland, fortunately, they believe it is benign. I didn't feel that tumor growing at all. "Your cells, the billions of them, are very similar to mine. My mitochondria is damaged and right now, there's no repair for it. My disorder is starting to look like this. I can't hardly be in my own home in the winter months because I can't even turn on the lights without feeling it." So I'm here to ask you for this ordinance again. And it's all up to you. And I don't have time. I think my 10 minutes are pretty up. So how about if I come back next month for 10 minutes and maybe you could give me...
We're going to hope to have something to answer for you. We're going to meet with the town board to see what we can do. We are a decision-making board, so we can't make a resolution. But we'll ask them what we can do for you.
Okay, okay. So I understand it correctly. You have to give them support?
We could if that's what the board wants to do.
Okay, great. Hey, thank you, everybody. I totally appreciate your attention.
And go ahead and send what you want and I'll see then it gets...
Oh, I was going to guess that. Yeah, 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 this is here. No, yeah, yeah. Oh, you know what?
Did you get one at home or you want us to send you one?
No, 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 I got, I got a bunch of them. And that here was my friend's testimony. Okay, hey, thank you again, everybody.
Thank you, Sharon. Okay, we can put the lights on. Thank you. And we're going to go back to the top of the agenda with the pledge to the flag, okay? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is ours, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paul McCauley.
Here.
Paul McCauley. Don Partridge.
Here.
Jonathan Long.
Here.
Steve Tanner.
Here.
Brooks Holly. Brittany Whitcoop.
Here.
Mike Dana.
Here.
Okay. We've got almost a full board processed to work tonight. Okay, so we do not need alternate members tonight to vote. We could have one, well, Brooks isn't an alternate, isn't he? No, he's not. Okay. One of the alternate members, let's let Mike try.
Yep.
Okay. If you guys want to find it out or we'll let Mike try.
I tried to get her to take my drop, she's complaining.
Okay, he'll be voting in place of Brooks tonight. Now, you got your minutes and I incorrectly put the date on it, but we got it straightened out now. We've got the last minutes we had were from Ben Guris Sift. And the first one was the public hearing for Wesley Winters. Does everybody have a chance to read them over? We got them. Okay.
Motion for approval.
Motion for approval, seconded by Paul McCauley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Then the second one is the regular meeting and that was on the same date as Guris Sift.
Motion for approval.
Approval by Dan, motion, seconded by...
I'll second.
Seconded by Paul McCauley. Any additions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Thank you. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is the public's turn to make comments on any of the agenda items. I see we have a few people from the public here. Did you want to wait till after the presentation from Bernary? And then we'll give you each a few minutes to speak?
Yeah, but my question is a few minutes anyway, so...
Oh.
I have answers too.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead with number two on the agenda, this is Bernary. We have Christian Bruner?
Bruner. I'm going to throw it over here if you don't mind.
Wherever you'd like me, please.
I have a little pointer here.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh. Okay, good evening. My name is Christopher Brown. I'm senior executive vice president of Bernary. Thank you for having me. I wish I was here two weeks ago, but I guess me was canceled and pushed tonight, which was fine with me, but... So I'm in front of you guys tonight for 8287 Lewiston Road subdivision, lot number one. I'm sure you guys are very familiar with it. It was recently, you know, very recently passed for a lot subdivision. I think you guys know it a lot better, probably I do. So I'm not going to go into it. But we do have under contract with Hicks, lot number one, which is right here, okay? And lot number two, just where you guys can see the Tractor Supply, half of the site plan here. But I think you guys can understand that direction. Church is up here to the north. The site is 1.72 acres. Road frontage, you have approximately 183 feet of frontage along Route 63, better known as Lewiston Road. And the future road, I don't know if it's named yet, is it named yet?
Yes, it is.
It is. It was what? The future road.
Rumsey Road.
Rumsey? Okay, Rumsey Road. I like future, but we can call it Rumsey. It's 321 foot, right here to here, so it's very, you know, long there. It is, again, Tractor Supply was approved by this board on lot number two. There is nothing else that I've known. I talked to Hicks in regards to lot three and four at this time. So it is zoned commercial. This here fits your definition. I read your zoning. It fits a gasoline station market, parentheses, community store. I don't like the panels for gasoline station. I call us a fuel facility with a Bernary retail store. But again, that is your definition that best fits my use. That is required from this board for special use permits.
Did you see that information the county sent over to us with the fuel stations behind?
I have not.
Oh, I'll make sure you get it up.
Oh, yeah, I'd love to see that.
Yeah.
Is this going to be open 24/7?
It would be a 24/7 operation, yes. All of our stores are. So now I'm going to get into the site plan. After I get through it, I can entertain questions. I think I'll cover a lot of it. I'm proposing a 4,232 square foot store. That is this green roof. I don't know, we are not west this far yet. I got a store in Brockmore, Rochester. We are a company, owned and operated company, family-owned. 74 locations. We do not franchise, which is very important. So you have a problem, you call me. I've been there 27 years. I'm on the board of drafters. I talk to the Bern family lots every day, okay? So we have our own maintenance staff. We have our own grocery warehouse in Auburn, New York, 45,000 square foot. We control our own deliveries. We have our, you know, it's Bernary, not fuel, it's all from the pipeline. But we used to be an Exxon Mobil distributor. I used to be a Hasid distributor. I used to be a Seiko. I used to be a Sunoco. We do not do that. One of the reasons is we control our own fate. We can call, you know, at any time, get a load of fuel. We try not to have a night for our workers. We try to have during the days and whatnot. But again, there's not too many company-owned and operated community stores left in the United States. There are not. You guys have seen 7-Elevens of the world and whatnot. But we take great pride in being a family business for a generation, for 90 years. We have milk plants. We employ over close to 2,000 people now. We have ultra pasteurized plants. We had a yogurt plant. We had a fresh milk plant. So our stores are very, very, very unique. We're not a C store, we're a dairy store with 28 to 29 cooler and freezer doors. We make our own ice cream. We have our own ice cream plant. We make fresh in Syracuse. We make our own doughnuts from scratch every single night and deliver to all 74 stores with our own vans every night. That is in Syracuse off Carrier Circle. So we do everything in-house, which is very rare, especially this day and age, finding help. We're doing it. That's why we have close to 2,000 employees. So again, the store's right here. We have porches on our stores. It's a farm market type store. I say that because I think it fits into this area. You can't fit any better than that. We're going in an old farmer's field with agriculture around it. Little info packets I handed out and made to you guys. Long story short is you'll look here and that is the store. I'll show it here. You can see the farm market, barn doors on it with a porch. You can see the porches, okay? Number, the package?
Can I take a look at that?
Yes, we handed out 7... Which one, where, 104?
Near Rochester.
Yes, I have one on Manitowoc, yep. Manitowoc, I got like five or six in Rochester.
Very nice.
Thank you. But yeah, it's a farm market. That's where we got the idea. First one I built was December 29, 1999. We have about 60 some of them that look very similar to this. But again, we're an agricultural company, so therefore, it's very important to keep our agricultural roots and make it a farm market store. Again, we're in front of a Tractor Supply store now. We're, you know, where the cattle farms is, so I think it's a great fit. So that's the store. Again, porches would be on the side right here. Porches on the front, okay? Orientation, that's the south, you know, there in the west. Okay, parking right here. We meet or exceed, so this plan right here, I have zoning requirements right here. Required, provided, there's no variances at all for this plan. No area variances whatsoever. I can fit it all in there nicely. 30 parking spaces. You can see the 30, they're on the side. We like to segregate our parking spaces when we can do it. The reason being, we have a lot of elderly people that could come in and get glass bottles. We still sell those. They're, you know, they do not want to go out to this pump area and get overwhelmed, per se. So they can come in and sneak in here, park here, go in the side entrance, get their milk, get their ice cream, get their bread, and they can go right back out without going into here. Then again, you got the younger people, you know, with kids and stuff, a one-stop shop. What are you going to do? You're going to go in there, you're going to get your gas, you're going to get your kids probably a dozen doughnuts. You're going to get a gallon of ice cream and probably a slice of pizza, right? I have four boys, I can tell you that. That's what I do. So that's, you know, this entrance will cater to those type of people. But parking along here, I put three parking spaces out here. Why did I do that? For employees, right, to keep them away from the people. But 30 is more than adequate for us. This is the fuel canopy right here, the white. The white rectangle right here is the fuel canopy. Okay, you can see it in the pictures there. That is four dispensers, fuel dispensers, eight fueling positions. Okay, so four of them, they can go on each side. We call them dive-ins, meaning they aren't stacked. I like to do dive-ins. Again, much less congestion on the sites, right, than stacking behind a car and waiting for the guy to come out of the store. We have to go around them. These ones are called dive-ins. You dive in, you get your fuel, you get out of there, okay? Eight fueling positions here. Typically, we have stores up in Rochester. I have some that I built 16 fueling positions. I got one, if you've ever been to the New York State Fair. I have a big station right out in front of there. I built that. I bought the Crucible Union Hall about six years ago, tore that down. And I built a Bernary there. That has 10 fueling, 10 dispensers, 20 fueling positions. Not picking on potatoes, but on potatoes, I don't think this site warrants that type of...
Thank you, so much. Turn on.
Every single one of these dispensers will have diesel on them. They are called three plus ones, meaning there's three grades and a yellow hose. And as you can tell, it's not geared for trucks at all. I drove here tonight in a Dodge Ram 2500 Laramie diesel truck. I have a diesel truck. I've always had diesel trucks. They're much more popular up roadway and I think around rural, you just get a lot of contractors. We cater to a lot of contractors. That seems to, you know, have the diesel. But so to answer your question, yes, they do. I do have sites though that have separate diesel islands. This does not for big trucks. This does, this does not. Again, when we look at the site, we look at the area, it doesn't warrant it. I don't think it does. If you've been to my one by the casino out in the town entire, Del Lago. If you go off the exit in Del Lago, I have another one there. If you look at that one, it looks just like this store. That one, I have 246 pumps out front. But out back, I also have a separate diesel island for tractor trailers. And I have diesel parking spaces. There are no truck parking spaces on this, nor is there a room. So they will not come here, okay? When one try to squeeze in, maybe, but then we'll go there one time.
What about your delivery truck? Fuel delivery?
Fuel delivery, that will come, you know, twice a week, hopefully, to sell some fuel. But again, I talked them out. Hence, another reason we need two curb cuts here on the road, right, drive behind. Also, for fire apparatus, we like to drive behind the store. That's why that driveway right there is 30 feet rather than 24. And that's why if you look at all my spacing here, it's 50 and 50. That fuel tanker truck can easily pull in here, hit the radius, come around here, drop fuel, come right back out and leave. The quicker I can get them on the site, off the site, the better for me, okay? All deliveries basically go through the front door or the side door. But again, we control those.
Will there be other alternative gas options there, like kerosene, propane?
No kerosene. We will sell propane cylinders underneath the porch. But that's it. We will not sell. And I'll answer the question right now. No, we do not have EV charging systems. We do not have them, any source, okay? We just don't. Underground storage tanks right here, that's the gray. That's concrete right there. We'll have two tanks, which is pretty standard at one of my Bernarys besides the diesel ones. This has a 20,000 gallon double-walled fiberglass tank in the ground. That's for unleaded fuel. The 10,000 gallons is a separate tank. I call it a 5-5 split. It's one tank, but it's split down the middle. 5,000 super in one compartment. The other compartment is 5,000 diesel. Okay, we just, as you know, we don't sell as much as, we just don't let them. Two tanks, double-walled fiberglass. They meet EPA and New York State D E C compliance. We go above and beyond. We have a phenomenal record with the New York State D E C. Actually, they train all the ECOs in New York State, true story, at the Plasky Bernary Academy on PBS. I let them use it. We schedule fuel delivery. And every ECO that goes through the Plasky Training Academy goes to a Bernary store for two days, learn from my fuel guys, and they teach them about PBS petrol box storage. And that's probably the D E C asking them to use my store because we run such good... Again, I'm in charge of the marketing for our company as well. So any spill, which is very rare, comes to me. Any hour of the night, I live on my cellphone. And I know every D E C guy pretty much across the state. Again, we're hands-on. We don't use consultants. I do it myself if there's a problem. Dumpster enclosure, right back here, tucked away back here, Roman numero three. That is in the handout right here. I realize every news panel pretty much says it has to be closed. So what I do, there, we'll show the camera here, there. But that is aged ivory PVC slats and chain link. Why aged ivory? The color of my store is aged ivory, right? I want it to match. I want it to blend in. I always try to put as far away from the main road as possible and kind of tuck it away, which I did here. And if you notice, I put a few extra trees here just to kind of dress it up, even though no one's going to see it. But I like to kind of dress it up there. But that's the dumpster enclosure. In regards to landscaping, I did meet with the church on January 26. I showed them this site plan, almost, Sharon and Ron were there, along with a past year, probably about six or seven other individuals. I think the plan was very well received. Why did I do it? I always do it with my neighbors. I work proactively in everything I do. I've been doing it 27 years. I've built lots of these. I'd rather make the neighbors happy. To me, making the neighbors happy, don't take it the wrong way, is more important than making this board happy. They're the most important people. They're going to have my cellphone number. They're going to call me if it's too loud at night. They're going to call me if the light's shining on their things, right? I aim to make them happy. I want them to have my cellphone. There was no landscaping here. I listened to their concerns. They all said, "Well, we really want a buffer there." I'm like, "Well, you already got trees over there, existing trees." Okay? But I said, "What do you like? I'll give you a six-foot cedar fence or I can give you some trees." And they sort of said, "Yeah, I was telling the board, you pick it. I don't care. I'll put a fence up, I'll put trees up, I'll do both." From the conversation we had with everyone's party members, that they would like to have a natural buffer. But I also put it on a berm, okay, to block any sort of headlights or noise. So that right there, it's labeled. That's a three-foot height, most berm, approximately 10 foot wide. And what I'm doing is I'm going to plant four-foot trees on that, a mixture of white pine and Norway spruce. So overall height, immediately from day one, most people, developers, they tell you they're going to plant trees. You know, they give you a lot of shrub. You know, these ones will be four-foot at planting. So right now, you're talking minimum of seven to eight feet at planting along this whole area. I left a little gap here. The church said they wanted people to see their sign right here. So I left this little opening here so they can see their sign here at the church, okay? I added some trees here. They said, "Can you give us a few more trees in case the trash truck was going?" And I said, "Sure, these trees might, you know, do it as well." So I gave them those trees. But that's per the request. That's why I met with them. You know, you can override them, I'm sure, but if you want to put a fence there, I just think it made sense to do that.
Just tell them that that berm is right on top of the easement for the sewer.
The berm is on top of the easement for the ten-foot easement from sewer. I have approved it from Hicks and Tractor Supply that if it gets damaged, it's my responsibility to replace my landscaping. I'm signing and writing with them, okay? I put, it is what it is. They're coming with a sewer temporary, again, from what I understand, right, temporarily.
Until further development.
Until further development, that kind of threw me off to a tight truth. You, oh, okay. There's, the sewer's not coming here, you can answer, but I don't know when.
Eventually, there'll be a sewer pump station, it'll be in the middle, kind of lower.
So that's gonna be abandoned, so that's the reason I'm doing this as well, so, and it's gonna be a new line, right? It's gonna be a new line, so therefore, I'm not, new line.
Steve, did, did the county change their regulation on the distance between a fuel station and a residential property? Because when we, when we did the Walmart and BJ's, um, one thousand feet was the delineation that the county had in its regulation. And if that's the case, he can't put a fuel station there because he's well within a thousand feet of residential. If they've changed it, I need to under, I need to know that because I didn't realize that it was changed. Because the stuff that I got from Felipe today, he says, oh, if you put it behind it, but, but that's still not a thousand feet from the edge of the property. And that's the way they were delineating it. And that's why Walmart wasn't allowed to put in a, in a fuel station in the property they still own.
The county regs say, I've never seen that in years.
And that was the reason, that was the reason why, it was like a five-hundred-foot centroy.
Yeah, the county doesn't do any land use planning or, you know, the, the town is responsible for their own land use.
Okay.
That would have to be a town regulation, which we do not have.
We don't have. Okay, that's a good thing.
Yes, that's.
Well, I, I never understood it, I'm honest with you.
I've never seen it, it has no jurisdictional value because they won't hold up. I would love to see it, yeah, I'd love to see that. Okay, let me keep going again, I met with the church, I think, I told them whatever changes they want, then open a direct conversation with me. I think they looked at this plan after I put the landscaping, when I dropped the plan off to you guys, I had my guy running over these guys, they like to look at it as well. I'm very, very, probably way too transparent, but I'd rather be that way than get here and discuss a, a, thanks for three minutes, okay? Landscaping, I just, again, you guys tell me, I threw some red maple one-point-five-inch caliber trees, street trees along here. I don't know your future plan along this whole thing, if, if you have a set type of tree or landscape thing. I don't know that, but again, I like trees, I wanted to throw some landscaping, some nice street trees. So when somebody pulls in here in the future, maybe they continue it down here, right, and they get some nice red maples.
We certainly, we certainly like.
We like red maple.
That kind of stuff, it becomes a maintenance issue for you, but you know, which is okay.
I hired a local contractor, so to me, it's not a maintenance issue, we, you know, we take great pride in our stores. I did do the measurements, I asked the church, they asked me to do some measurements, so I have a plan in there. But we measured from the edge of the fuel canopy to the front of the church, which is up here, we have an aerial. We did it, that's three hundred and forty-seven feet over a football field from the church, the, the edge of the fuel canopy. The edge of the building is three hundred and twenty-one feet, again, more than a football field away, okay? And then you add the buffer right here, and you know, they have their trees there, okay? Uh, just wanted to make that note. Snow storage, I put that on there, we don't have snow anymore, as you guys know, so I'm not really worried about it. Uh, but I did, I did label it, uh, there is snow right here. Thirty-seven feet of green space back there, so I have a lot of snow storage. Uh, curb cuts, driveways, let it go for me as curb cuts. As you guys know, the state DOT did not like my proposal to go on Route sixty-three, that was not taken well from them. Uh, they couldn't even, but, so, I proposing two curb cuts here. Again, that's your future road, irony for Anthony, I apologize, I'll write it down sometime, I'll give the name, I'll call it the future road, two curb cuts here. I can't remember my kids' names, okay? I don't believe, if you don't want me to drink, believe me.
I don't know if I can trust you though.
I don't, so, uh, we designed these per DOT standard, thirty feet, uh, thirty-three degree radius. Again, I'm not gonna do anything different, okay? But you can see the need for two of them here, I think it's pretty self-spiratory for, for traffic flow. You, I did provide a letter for my traffic engineer to the engineering department. So they could update the traffic, T I S they call it, I call it a simple traffic study. So they can update the traffic study and give it to the New York State DOT in Rochester, so they can look at it and see our trips. Our, and I gave them my trip gens, my engineer did it, it's all based on numbers, I T Trip Generation Manual. A hundred and eight, uh, entering, entering in the morning, peak hour at ninety-one at night. So we don't, believe it or not, generate that much traffic. Uh, I shouldn't say this, but I will say it, uh, we are really aren't a destination like a Walmart. We'd like to think we are, but we aren't. We take existing traffic off the current road and bring it into a burn dairy, that's what we do. We don't create this Walmart-type, oh, I gotta go there all the time. You know, maybe we do with our mint milk and our strawberry milk once in a while, but not consistently, we take existing traffic. So that, these are actual numbers that we run across the state, and they have them, it's a simple mathematical equation, they're gonna plug them into, Pacero's gonna plug them in. I don't think Pacero will make it that simple, but they should, they should plug these numbers into their base T I S study. And generate trip gens that come out on a sixty-three with Tractor Supply. Okay, and then that's gonna dictate if any mitigation is required. But they did have that, I sent that, uh, we're gonna have to go because I really wanna, you know, get this, this going, uh, so I did do that. Uh, signs. It was in this package, and I signed this in the package. Uh, again, no variances, so I'm gonna pass sign number one, it's a freestanding sign, twenty feet high. You can tell we use the green roof, the aged ivory, kind of blend into architectural feature. Your zoning is fifty square foot max, this sign is forty-eight, okay? That right here is a debate already for me, uh, the reason is, I ended up, I wanted my sign right here. Tractor Supply had already gotten easement from there, that I was unaware of. And they're proposing their sign right there, so I cannot go there. So I'm gonna, I'm asking this board now, so, I don't know, toll-two sign on one lot is confusing to me. But they have an easement, or they want an easement, they're gonna give an easement. I've already signed that I will have to give an easement because if not, I can't go here. Their easement is right where the sign is, so I'm gonna have to take my sign and move it further down somewhere, okay? I, I can jump over to here, the church did have a little concern about blocking their sign down here. That's why I told the church I would keep my sign, you know, far down here. So this stormwater management system is fictitious, I shouldn't say that, but it is. We just show it to tell you that, I understand it's a one liter, I have to pause speeds, it's a SWIP, I understand it. It's not size, is what I'm trying to say, I just say, listen, we have the space to do it right there, is it gonna be that shape? No, so, Ron, probably gonna do more than likely is move my freestanding sign here. Tractor Supply and Hicks tells me that the boards here have already approved their sign on my, on this property. So, I, I don't know if they did or not. I got pictures of it, so, I, I, I went through the minutes.
No, I don't remember it either.
Okay.
Do, do the signs come here only if they're, only if they're above the requirements, or does Dan?
I believe we changed it so it's only if it's above the requirements.
Well, either way, I told them, they get preference for a sign, and this board says I can't have my own freestanding sign. I made it very clear to them in easement language, my attorney changed it, I'm done. I'm not, you know, I need to advertise what I have there, right? I mean, that's just standard, and they appreciate it, I mean, it's, you know, it's, I mean, they're in lot two, I'm in lot one. I, I need it, people are gonna go to Tractor Supply, I go to Tractor Supply a lot, you know?
Can I ask you a question?
No.
How big is their sign?
Their sign, I have a picture of it there, it's, uh, twenty feet high, it says T S C N.
Yeah, but how big is the footprint?
Uh, I don't know, I got it in there.
Because unless I miss my guess from the prints we got from them, where that road is, there's a gap of about twenty feet that nobody owns.
So what I said, and I showed the emails, I said, why wouldn't you use this right-of-way here for your sign? That you're talking about, right? That's what I said, it made no sense to me. You have this here, which is never gonna be, that right there is space, a huge right-of-way. But yes, I, that's what I said, why can't you put your sign in this future space here and I can go here? But again, there, he said that it was all set, so, we can look into it. Whatever it seems, I'll lean on the town to whatever we wanna do. I'm not saying I understand they need a sign too, but I need a sign too.
There's, there's four parcels there, so we're gonna have four different signs at this corner.
Why don't they have one big, some big pole that everybody can put their, their sign?
Yeah, because I've seen them with.
That makes me way more.
Multiple signs and the LED for your fuel, right there, we, we were in, uh, Ohio not too long ago, and there was. Multiple signs and then there's the LEDs for fuel cost.
Yeah.
K marker, that old.
Well, you have, you have your pricing. I don't think we wanna, I don't think we wanna.
Yeah, if it's like. What is it uglier than having four signs at the road? Or, or the sign that, that they have at the Target Plaza.
Yeah, it's another sign.
That, that to me is a nice sign.
Yes, that's a, like, don't use the value of center signs.
No, 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 I'm talking about something that looks really nice.
The town's center sign.
Yes. That's, that, that was my concept.
And maybe if the town's in favor of this planning board, you know, that'll be a variance, I'm sure we're gonna be over the fifty square feet. But if that's you guys' recommendation, I'm sure this is.
I'd rather have one big.
Exactly, right?
All the signs in one spot instead of all these little things all over.
I would a hundred percent agree with that.
Where would you put your pricing then?
That's your big, I'd assign somewhere.
Is that, did I just add what we already promised Tractor Supply?
Dan, Dan approved their sign.
They sent me a picture, because I requested a picture, I said, I didn't see it in anything that I saw either, I'm like, could you send me a picture of that sign?
So does Hicks own all the property?
No. Just those two. Cal, Cal's still, Cal, your Cal, we're gonna, the three and four, they're gonna watch the two.
I thought that was interesting as well.
I found that the other day, I thought it was pretty interesting, so. But, uh, how about this, I heard you guys say you want one sign, let me go back to Hicks. See if you can work on your department, see if it was approved, right? But again, I just want the board to know that, as you guys know, it's very important for me to have freestanding sign, especially in the fuel world, right?
We'll find out for you.
Okay, thank you, just clarification, I'm gonna be back in front of you guys a couple times when he was unsure.
The only thing we can do, we're doing today is.
Secret part one.
Basically.
Seek lead.
Yeah. Seek lead agency.
Send it out for coordinating.
Yeah, that's all we can do.
Yeah.
That's all we can do today is seek lead agency, takes thirty days, so we're, we're looking at April for, for bringing you back.
Yep, I know.
Unless you wanna come back and just talk to us.
I know, I do like to talk to you, we enjoy your, you know.
So I would, I would entertain a motion to seek lead agency, the burn dairy project. Motion by Paul Marcasi, seconded by, by Mike.
Paul Marcasi.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Pamakawa.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Steve?
Yeah.
Kathy?
Yes. Hey, now, there's still a few minutes, a few, of people from the church would like to say something.
Can I ask if there's any other questions, because I'd like to move, uh, just a sign issue, I see, you guys seen anything else on the plan?
This was a great discussion, I think we don't.
I have, I have questions, and since this gentleman is here, Pete, now is the time I would like to ask him questions.
That's okay, yeah.
Uh, if it's up to the board pleasure, sometimes the board can let me.
We, we have it on our agenda, we're allowed to.
I don't care, I'm very transparent, I'm not gonna hide anything.
Yeah, it's a public comment.
I can, if you want me to answer, I will.
What we can, what we can do.
That would be up to you.
It's up to you.
I don't want anything.
Yeah.
Can, can you give them your email address and they can write any questions?
I can, I'll take anything, everyone can have all my emails.
Okay.
You want some kids too?
Got a couple of my own, I'm good.
No. That's a big enough kid to take.
Pardon me?
I think the worst is Gary, your question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because, okay, my name is Dave Zaremsky, eighty-two, forty-eight Liston Road.
Across from the sign.
I'll be right across, I'm at Ground Zero, I'll be right across from your store.
Okay.
I guess my first, one of my questions is, why does the town of Potavia not have a setback rule for gas stations?
Dave's your question, there does have a separate section for gas station requirements and setbacks. So there is a specific zoning law that they want above and beyond, if you look here at my provided thing. So you have zoning, a commercial zoning says the building has to be X, right? Right. Okay, then you also, in your zoning, I forget what section, I should be able to quote it, but you have a gas station section that goes above and beyond, it supersedes your current zoning. That is right here, I put that on here, so a gas station is above and beyond, fuel component setback. Okay, fuel dispensers, a hundred and three, you know, it says they must be thirty feet from the property line, fuel tank setback must be thirty, right? So the, the town does have more stringent zoning laws for a gas station, so that does, that does happen.
My next question would be is, why do we need another gas station?
You know, these are, these are town questions.
Yeah, that, that's not, I can't, I can't legally answer that question.
Okay, because there's ten gas stations within a mile and a half of my house.
Yeah, but that's a town question after.
Okay, then, then, okay, then, my other question then, about the air quality with the benzene from the gas?
Uh, to answer that question, the tanks will be, we follow all EPA and New York State D E C guidelines, we follow them or exceed them. So we meet their requirements.
One of the things that I was looking at, and it was the C E V S, and it's the Community and Environmental Defense Services. And they help out in these kind of situations, and they require a minimum of three hundred feet is what they are saying for air quality. Because they're saying at three hundred and twenty-eight feet, air pollution is still elevated. And then what about all the idling engines that are, because nobody, a lot of times, they, they don't shut their cars off, and that's running, that does it. Then you did say how many gallons per day? Then I read where John Hopkins University said that, and on an average, about forty gallons of spilled gas per year per gas station, so that's out there. The air pollution, noise pollution, and then the lighting pollution, and then you were addressing that. Because then I saw they have an Illumination Engineering Society of North America, and that goes into all kinds of stuff.
And you know what, I didn't, I got cut off, but I have, I will have, prepared by Illumination Lighting Engineer. A zero-foot candle property, I do this all the time, so in the cities. This right here is, this is the city of mine, I just showed you. This board we presented this next time I come here, done by my professional engineer in Ohio. After I get the warm fuzzy, which I got tonight, I'm not gonna do it previously, in case you wanted something to move. So you are gonna get a foot candle study. I am required by New York State law, I cannot have any spill on any property line, it has to be zero point zero, okay? So that is lighting spill, we also go above and beyond with the lighting engineer, that's the foot candle study. Then we go above and beyond for neighbors, and we give a pseudo-plan of what it looks like in the air. Okay, to make sure there is no lighting spill. Again, I cannot have any sort of spill. This is done here, per the site plan, then my last page is gonna be all my fixtures. And if you look in there, if you can reference it, you can go back and Google it, all of my fixtures are dark sky friendly compliance, okay? The most, it's the most stringent lighting fixtures in the industry, okay? Directional downward lighting, a hundred percent LED, everything meets, that's exact standards we follow. Actually, we follow the best practice standards that they have. And if you look, you'll see, it's referenced out here multiple times that the lighting standards are dark sky friendly compliant. Rochester taught me that about fifteen years ago in a bad way, uh, they said, you know, you gotta have them and you can't have lighting spill. Since then, in the last five years, all these laws came out for zero point zero, okay? So I didn't get to say that, but this board will have a lighting plan, you're more than happy to contact me, I will sit down and blow it up for you and show you the zero point zero foot candles. I'll come to your house and show you, very, very confident, that's, I wouldn't hand my cell phone out to you, my personal cell phone. If I'm not overly confident on lighting spill, you can call me anytime.
Because that was, um, I have a personal thing with that benzene, when I started looking up benzene, it's the most cancer-causing hydrocarbon out there. And two years ago, this is personal for myself, my wife had a triple-negative breast cancer. Two years, cancer-free, I don't need her having the stress of having this right across the street. That was one of my. That was one of my concerns. I'm just throwing that out there. Um, then concerning the store, loitering and litter. I don't need napkins, cups, wrappers, at all over. That, every day I pick up stuff off of my front yard anyways. Don't need that. Are you gonna sell beer?
We do sell beer.
Okay. They always say, sometimes the crime rate goes up when you sell beer. That's not the case, hopefully?
We have a good record, I would say, with that. Again, we're a family oriented store with a dairy focus.
My next one is, ah, the value of homes next to.
You know, excuse me a minute. We're gonna have a public hearing, and that's really where these questions should come.
That's a hundred.
Ah, okay, I thought that.
No, you can, you can bring them up at that public hearing.
At the public hearing.
So they're recommended.
Do do the whole presentation over again so that other people can hear it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Because you have good questions.
No, it's, I can, I can, these are questions I've heard.
But this isn't the time for it.
Oh, okay, that I thought tonight was where I could ask questions.
I have to you.
Well, if you can make comments on agenda items, and you did, and and we understand where where you're coming from now.
Yeah, because, ah, I did see one place where if you're trying, if if I ever sold my house and somebody wanted an FHA. Banks are not supposed to deny a mortgage, but they, sometimes they do because it's next to a gas station. And if somebody can't get an FHA loan, that could be a problem. So value of your house, that means a lot. So I do have, um, no, that was about it. Um, those were the main ones. I know also in that report, they had residential proximity to gas stations, the risk of childhood leukemia goes up. Vapors from benzene does cause lung, brain, and kidney damage. That was from the National Library of Medicine. Um, I know I am only one person here, and I'm going up against a multimillion dollar corporation, so.
Are you against it, or are you just wanna work out the details? Cause we'd like to all work together.
Yes, I would prefer if it was a three hundred foot setback. I would prefer that gas station be further back.
Would you prefer if the bays here were behind the store? Is that what you're saying?
Anything to move it.
That's room bound.
That that would be.
Because isn't that what Felipe recommended?
Yes.
He said Felipe. An email he sent, that's what he recommended.
I will be very, very blunt and honest with this board, cause I am, okay, unfortunately too honest. If we are made to put the pumps behind the store, we're out. I told Steve this. It's neither a question with owner, I won't even go back to him. This is a revenue stream for us.
Understood.
So I'm not threatening them.
What is the deal breaker on it though? I mean, why, why the the absolute, absolute?
Because it needs to be visible for somebody going down the road to understand that there's fuel pumps there.
You have your sign, right?
Yeah.
With fuel prices.
Understand.
But you're putting your store, which is what I would assume you're priming yourself on with the country store, right? That's visible from the roadside, from the new Rumsey Road and sixty-three. You're gonna see burn dairy. This is what we are from behind the store.
The fuel pumps, the design of the store, the backside of that store has twenty-eight, it has a freezer and a cooler, the whole backside of the freezer. We would have to change the entire layout of our store. Okay, we have seventy-four of these. Okay, I'm not, again, I'm not, the pumps are not going behind the store. It's, 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 it's business suicide. And we're, we're very successful for a reason. We have them, we have this, it works. We don't have one behind the store. It's just, it's not gonna happen.
You can't put your store in lot three or four?
No, the corner lot is where we like to go. That's where the traffic.
My only concern is further, any, all my articles that I've always read, further the better.
Okay.
Um, I have all kinds where.
You can, you can make cafes. You'll send them to us if you'd like.
Yeah.
But again, I have to follow the EPA and New York State DEC guidelines. That's who it is. If they're fine with it, I meet their regulations, I meet or exceed them, I get my permits, I move forward. I've done this a lot in very, very, very tiny neighborhoods and cities. I've had the same exact arguments from the same exact place you got those from.
Yes.
I, I can tell you, in your ROND quarter, I've done this two years ago. I just did this in Greece and Gates with, you know, fifteen neighbors showing up with the same exact documentations. They actually hired the firm who you probably, they probably tell you you can hire someone.
I can for a thousand dollars, for a thousand dollars.
They hired. Let me know how you make out. They did it.
I can.
Same thing with the house values. I have documentation from real estate agents and appraisals that we do not affect. Property values that have been to court, that have been vetted by supreme judges, that we do not affect it. I've been, I'm not taking, no, I've been through all this.
I, I would imagine.
Like crazily by thirty people lining up with the same exact statements you have, same studies, verbatim. They hired the people, you know, it's like.
Okay, then, then that's good. If you can tell me that.
They're my number one customers right now.
I, I would imagine, but, uh, home value, everything that they were saying, it goes down about thirty percent. And if you're saying that is not true, then that is a very good statement.
It is. That's factual.
Okay, then, you know, at some point I will be selling my house.
I understand.
And.
Listen, you have very valid concerns.
Okay.
You do, and I understand that. I've been through them all. I've vetted them and, and, yeah.
And we welcome you back to our.
Yes, yes.
You'll, you'll.
And that's the other thing, you know, two o'clock in the morning, I don't need to hear banging, cars, the, the whole thing. Um, my wife gets up at five o'clock in the morning. She goes to bed at eight o'clock. She has a tough job.
Okay, understand.
And these are just some of the concerns. Like I said, her bedroom, our bedroom is on that side and.
Oh, you're beautiful if I looked at it.
That was the whole thing. So, okay, you, you answered some of the questions. Made me feel better tonight. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
One question follow up on that. Is there opposition to a ninety degree turn, ninety degree rotation?
The site is not big enough for that layout, unfortunately. If you look at the lot one, it's, you see, it grows.
I understand.
It is what it is. The layout, believe me, I try crazy layouts on my drafting table. I come up with these. And this layout with functionality, right, driving behind the store, keeping the customer separate, this is what works. You're right, it's wide in a bag. I put my parking space in aside. I leave the store pretty fun. I lose all my.
The only question I have is the same one I asked you at the church. What are you gonna do if you find out you got bedrock underneath it?
I already did it.
You did?
I got your answer. Didn't you see him out there digging? You see, you watch everything.
We missed something.
You missed it.
Couple of days.
There you go. The mini excavator was there and went down twelve feet and then hit a guy. Right where the tank holds.
So just what?
You had to mow our yard and pick the trash up.
Oh, okay.
For two donations a day.
Do you do air quality sampling?
We don't.
You don't do that?
No, we don't do that.
You don't have to?
Uh, again, we, all of our design is done, every part that we order for the fuel facility is petroleum rated and approved by the EPA and DEC. So the vent pipes that we have have to be, uh, we run our vent pipes through our candy towns, which I do told more than most people. Most people put the vent pipes off to the side of the ground. I run them up through the, up through the vents, so when they're done, they're eighteen foot clear. Okay, but all those are controlled by the petroleum industry and the engineers. So everything we order from Franklin Fueling Systems, if you look them up, that's what we buy from. It's basically a kit. And all the vapors control, the stage, it's called stage two recovery.
Yes, I saw that, cause I, I had the stage one in here.
The old days of them delivering fuel, back when I first started, twenty-seven years ago, they would go and they'd hook the vent up, and you'd stand there when they're, and you would smell the fumes, right?
Yes.
That's long gone. Now you have to hook up the vent thing, which is a yellow cap. You hook up the vapor recovery tube and the fill tube. It sucks the vapors back out of the ground into the truck. It's called, and it's, so they're always contained. They've come a long, long, long.
Okay, cause that was one of the things when those tankers filled it, they said that's where a lot of the benzene came out of.
But there's no testing you have to do on the basis to make sure that that's working properly or anything?
There is not. Uh, no, it's not. The DEC, we do monthly inspections.
I just mentioned, I'm not, I'm not trying.
Yeah. Yeah, no, no, every, every three years, the DEC tomorrow morning, I'll be meeting a DEC official and doing five visits with them, five burn dairies in Syracuse myself. I go within myself.
Yeah.
If he finds anything. We're required to police it in-house. Every month I have a maintenance guy, six of them that go around and fill this book out. It's called the Fuel Maintenance Book. Yes, they have to check vents. They have to ball flow valves. They have to push them and make sure that they, yeah, so we do check them. Every week our manager has to go out and open dispenser slums, look down in to make sure there's no product. Also, I have twenty to thirty sensors on this everywhere. So if there's any moisture hitting anywhere, they alarm.
Yeah, I'll get my gas there because I filled my car up with gas. I had water and it wasn't.
You, you can do that. A lot of lower stations don't have that. So yes, do we check the vapor, that stage two system? Yes, it's a simple ball flow, believe it or not. It's in a tube of four inch tube. It goes down the tube. You push it down.
If it doesn't come up, you're in trouble.
You, but you will know it pops back up. So yes, it is, there is a checks and balances, so.
Yeah.
Okay, then you did say you have documentation about the home value.
Yeah, I can get from, I can get from what I did make you run, whatever you want. I do, alright, I'll take care of it there.
It is something you can talk to the, the town assessor about too.
Okay, thank you, yes. Very good.
If those are questions that'll come up, we're going to do an environmental review, and we, and they need to meet the regulations. So everything that gets done there will meet regulations if it's approved. So and you, and you can come to every meeting and see everything that we do.
Yes. And you can call me off, off the record too as well.
Yes, I.
I'll come into your house and, if I can answer your question. Matt, you may not like my answers, but I'm gonna tell you the, you know, I'm gonna tell you this to the church.
It sounds like you've gone through this. I, I just started looking at this, um, I probably spent three hours on the internet, and this is all the information. And you, sounds like you've already gone through.
I don't know those things will break to a T, yeah.
So, thank you. We're, 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 of this week's seeking lead agency will, uh, we'll be looking at our April, see, April sixteenth meeting.
Yes, yes, glad I got your question. Yeah.
Probably to do the seeker. That's what I think right now. If it's any different, I'll let you know.
Yeah, so then we have a traffic study.
Should have drafted two weeks.
Pardon me?
The traffic study is.
Traffic study.
I have a cafe, don't I?
Well, that was the one for traffic. For traffic supply and. So it's the town boards that are into a agreement with the state's stronger transportation. Any development out there, we update the model. And there will be certain triggers where improvements will happen along Lewiston Road and Veterans Drive and so on, over time, so.
So did you have a timeframe for this going in?
If the board approves it in April, I'll start in May. June, July takes me ninety to a hundred and twenty days. So I would have this open in September.
Yeah.
We move very quick. I got three stores in construction now. I'll do up to ten this year. We're aggressive. I don't permit him to sit down. That's not what we do.
Thank you.
I mean, thank you very much.
Quite relaxing presentation. Thank you very much.
Rumsey. I'll remember that one.
Rumsey?
Yeah.
I'm gonna write down right now.
I don't like.
Okay, do we have a zoning enforcement officer here tonight? I don't think so. Steve, are you going to do the zoning enforcement report?
I don't think so.
That was a good answer.
I'm gonna enforce.
I'm assuming they don't have one tonight because they're.
We're gonna. On the Sharon thing, we have a minute or two to talk about that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, uh, before we go any further on the agenda, we should talk for a minute about Sharon with what the presentation. And we definitely have to give her an answer. We just can't keep saying, come back, come back, come back. I think we gave her an answer by saying, um, we really can't do anything, but maybe we can. You know, maybe, maybe we better find out if there is something we can do.
Well, I, I did, did, sort of, I Googled the, um, electromagnetic sensitivity syndrome. So it, it says, a few per million are affected by this. So there's three hundred and nine, three hundred and thirty-one million people in the United States currently, which would mean there's one thousand six hundred and fifty-five if I use the, a few being equal to five. So for a thousand people, I, I sympathize. But I don't think that we can recommend doing anything because of the amount of affected people is so small that we would, we would be recommending something for two people in, in, in New York. You know, or may, or whatever, might be, maybe it's a hundred people in New York. Um, and I don't think the Federal Communications Commission, the jurisdiction on that is gonna even listen to anyone, um, if, if there's no class of affected people that's significant.
What was she asking though? Because if I recall from her last presentation, it was to adopt a code that has already been adopted in other places that more or less just ask for the, for there, that there to be like either insulation or, or more efficiency with what does get provided, which I think everybody.
Yeah, she, she had cited it was a co-pay or co-pay access, was it? I, I couldn't remember.
Did, did, it took us a while to figure out what she was talking about, and I think it turned out to be township.
It's a township in New York, and she was referring to it as a city.
Right.
Or a county, and it's a township in New York State.
That passed a local law that, that, it wasn't just specific to electromagnetic radiation. It was.
That passed it, yes. I don't believe so.
It was a whole energy code.
Yeah, there, there was placement of radio, cellular, anything that can be radio transmission. But it didn't come off and say you had to be so many feet away. They actually passed a code saying, it has to come in front of the board.
And local law, it's to the town board. That's what we had told her, is it?
Just, just to look at. Right.
I mean, we could, could we make a recommendation to the board? We could if we wanted to, that they look into it.
But again.
But it's not our decision until we tell the town board whether or not to pass a local law.
And for what I do for, I've, I've been working with a lot of radio people. I have family members that are in cell towers.
Right.
They generally try to place them away from homes. They're not, they're not twenty, yeah, they go on where, there's people movement and all that.
Yeah, they're mostly on throughways. It's already clear.
Or there's an existing regular tower because they gotta be up a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty feet. So it's not right out through bedroom window. Now, I know in Batavia, there are a few spots where there's the five G transmitters on telephone poles or on top of olivers. But if you look at the one on the telephone pole on thirty-three, it's in front of the old, uh.
Well, yeah, I'm not, I definitely don't wanna be rude to five G.
If it wasn't for five G, I couldn't keep my weight on it. Right.
We have to, we transmit all of our Wi-Fi when we're doing the ALS. It's looking at the data and making sure that everyone's cool.
And some of the frequencies that she, some of the frequencies that she's referencing turns off the share of transmission radios too. And so now you turn off a lot of public safety stuff.
Right.
Or you have all the towers.
And that's, that's why, like, I mean, if, if it is gonna be a town code, the town board needs to really, you know.
I don't agree, I don't agree.
Look at it, understand it.
Right. Right.
And, and make sure that they know the ramifications of passing a local law that could have those type of ramifications.
But, 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 but the question is, will the local law have any teeth in it if the FCC says Verizon, you can put that up?
I think you're concentrating too much.
You understand what I'm saying?
I think you're concentrating too much on this radio towers because the co-chief was referencing was lighting. It was, it was, it was all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, because.
And radiation, she was citing radiation from the military, you know.
It was a lot, it was more than just communication towers.
Yeah, because there, there is a lot of, a lot of what she referenced in the passwords, even, um, radios hook up for surveillance cameras in tops parking lot. So there would have to be a regulation.
But I think that really needs to happen from her.
Wouldn't this have to be vetted by attorneys?
What, what this is, what needs to happen is from her, she needs to provide what she's recommending to the town board is, this is the local law that you consider.
Well.
And then.
Which she hasn't really defined that.
Well, the thing, the thing is, if you look at some of the paperwork that she sent out before, where she references all these scientific factoids.
All she's. Oh, New York has it.
Right, I mean.
But that's.
A lot of it is cherry picked out where, we did one study in this small little group with, you know, EMF radiation of X. And United States has this much larger EMF. Well, if you're out in the very, very rural area, yeah, you do have a higher concentration because you gotta go further. If you're in urban, it's smaller. But a lot of her studies, I, when she started sitting around again, couldn't even, you know, kinda got after me because I kinda went nose deep into it. I could not find reproductive. I could not find reproductions of the same study. So there isn't peer study, there isn't peer review, so.
Well, we can, we can always write a, a letter to the town board telling them we understand there's a concern. We, we sympathize and we, we, we feel a lot bad for, for the people that are involved. And we would, we would promote any kind of steps they would take to, to address it because we can't. We can't address it, we can just listen.
But to address it without affecting other quality of life standards.
I think we're just at the point with the planning board, we're gonna either send a letter to the town board recommending they look into it or not. And I'm not in favor of sending a letter.
I, I don't.
You're not in favor of sending a letter?
I'm not in favor.
Me neither.
Do you wanna take a vote tonight and end it?
I would, I would be okay with that, yes.
And then I, I can call Sharon or write to her, um, if that's what you want. Now, think about it for a minute, it's, uh, I mean, it is one lady, she definitely has a problem. We care about her, but.
I certainly sympathize with it.
Yeah, I completely sympathize.
It's, it's difficult, it's a difficult situation.
All right, uh, do you wanna do that?
I would recommend that we, we do not take any action.
A, a motion not to take any action, uh, for, against, what would you call it? I've been calling it the, uh, radiation overload.
Well, it's a, it, well, it basically is the electromagnetic.
Sensitivity disorder.
Sensitivity syndrome or disorder. You know, that's what she described it as to me.
Okay. So we, we would not send the letter to the town board, we would let Sharon know that there's nothing that this board can do and.
Right.
We hope that she feels better.
Absolutely.
She's been to the town board several times.
I'm not trying to pick her off, there's really nothing we can do about her.
She's, she's been to the town board, we, we've talked with her.
And what do you tell her?
I, I'm not really sure what we can do for her, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, and the.
That's the way she feels.
It's all new to us, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, the town, the town board was looking for any insights, any thoughts, anything from this board as a planning board um, to give feedback back to the board. So that ultimately they can decide if they need to wanna pursue it any further or consider anything or not.
So I, I think what we're missing, you know, from her, are the concise items that she would like us to do. You know, she's, she cited these, these. But again, we don't have that capability as a planning board, anyway.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, is there a second?
Also.
I said it by first. Um, the color column, Marquez.
Chair, I like the halls.
Um. Roll call please.
Palmer Cheese.
Yes.
Pomacowa.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes, okay, this, this will end it as far as our board's concerned. And we will copy the town board, or send a letter to the town board. No, we'll go, we'll appear to the town board, you know that.
We can meet with the town board, but I think we just have to.
I think that's the best way to handle it, because they just said don't do the letter.
We need to communicate with Sharon, that's, I think that's really the big thing.
And we can meet with the town board just to.
Can, can we come in next Wednesday? I'll, I'll call Shannon after.
You'll be away from tomorrow?
Yeah.
Probably.
Okay, see if that works for you.
Yeah, I really truly sympathize with her and I know there are people that have the sensitivity, but I think the percentage is so small that.
Well, it's just like, if I don't know what happened to my wife's house or have kidney disease, it's something that I don't wanna change. I don't wanna change it.
Oh, absolutely.
But if it's something that happens to one in five million people.
Right.
And I'm asking you to change something that would affect more than one in five million people?
Right.
Then what do you do?
And that's, that's the other, other side of the equation. We, we make that recommendation and all of a sudden now we affect, you know, the masses.
That's not, I, I need, I need my wifi, I need my wifi.
Well, it's like, it's infrastructure, so if you compare me, it's not the same thing. Compared to the, compared to the throughway, the throughway went in, disrupted, you know, hundreds of people, created thousands and thousands of acres of. I mean, it's not, not the same, but it's, I mean, the five G is infrastructure, essentially.
Right.
Does anyone else have a comment on that item before we close it? Okay, it's taken care of. Uh, next is my report, uh, next meeting is March nineteenth. Hopefully we'll maybe biogas or have something by then.
Yeah, we, I think thirty days is coming up pretty soon as far as lead agency status, so.
Yeah.
We'll see what the comments, um, if any came back. Um, and then, you know, if this board has any comments or any additional information that they feel that they need from either Genesee Biogas or HP Hood, you know, let us know and then the attorney will kinda assemble all those requests for additional information. Um, you know, ultimately, you all wanna make sure that you have all the information, so in order to this five G discussion, have all the information that you'll be able to, uh, review and make a declaration, either negative or positive.
Do we have to wait for the attorney to redo the, the overall seeker, uh, nuts to?
The, the, the.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, F E I S.
Yeah.
Final environmental.
Do we have to wait for that before we can take action or?
No, if you remember the, the meeting that he kinda presented, the, what options are available to you, it's, you know, it will depend on, on, you know, whether you feel it's a, it's positive, that there is an impact or not. If there's not, then you'll, you'll update your original finding statement that you made um, for the original environmental impact statement for the ag part.
Okay.
Um, so do, do we have the water use, the wastewater generation for the HP Hood?
Yep.
Do we, do we have all this, all the plans and everything, the, the seeker?
Do we?
Yeah, believe me, you should have everything. If you don't, then you need to.
Do you remember, I don't remember seeing the.
I have addition.
If they added that forward.
Yeah, but it was, it was all attached to all the stuff that the, I mean, they have an application in.
Why don't you send us the application again?
Maybe two, two months, three months.
No, maybe you could send it again if that.
I could go left.
I think, I think you've all got it, but I think it's been a long time.
Steve, I have an engineering question for you. When you, when we toured Hood, their compressor room has a blowout wall.
Right.
Designed to take an explosion, worst case scenario, to direct the blast away from critical places. Do you, CH four is explosive. Do you, as the engineering department, look at for safety, worst case scenario, options?
Yeah, I mean, it all falls under the building code for a lot of the structures and the gas and the regulations, so, yeah, that all gets, gets looked at. Yeah, with HP Hood and then they've got the ammonia plan, emergency plans, um, you know, yes, that's all looked at. Yeah, so, yeah, we'll make sure that.
Make sure we have.
Recirculated and.
Usually, not usually, I always copy you when I send things to the board, so. But, but if you, if you have it handy, send it and move forward again. Okay, um, is there anything else, uh, for the meeting tonight? Okay, um, Mike, motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
So can I say Tanner, all in favor? Thank you. That, that's our.
Mike, you're gonna make a motion to adjourn, okay?